Because our electricians.
There we go.
There's a thing down there. I'm good.
You're live. You're recording.
Fair enough. All right. So today is July 10th, I believe, 6:00 PM, a little after. We'll go ahead and get this meeting started. Looks like we have forum. And so the agenda, first thing on the agenda is just to cover the consent agenda. We have a couple of items on the consent agenda for later on this upcoming week. And we have to approve, I guess, the agenda that has been posted. There's only a couple of items on the agenda. You need a copy, I guess, we can pass down the agenda.
I have it on.
Okay. But go ahead and I'll.
I'll make that motion. A second.
Yep. I got a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye. All right. Motion carries. We have consent agenda. There's only one item on the consent agenda for special events. If you guys had a chance to read through that.
I have no concern. I don't either.
Yep. I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Okay, I got a motion. I got a second. Okay. And a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye. All right, motion carries. And now for the main topic for tonight, um, this is just going to be a workshop. There's not going to be public interaction. This will be for the city council to openly talk about the special assessment policy. We do have a couple of people in the audience here. If if we do have a generic question about the policy, I might entertain it, but we will not be going into specifics on specifics on people's property, for examples. So this is our chance to talk about special assessment policy openly on camera as a group. And I'll go ahead and let Jim or Brenton take it from here.
Brenton can give you a starting. We'll take it into detail. So we've got, I guess I can start again.
You're sorry now.
Yesterday you were sent two different scenarios based on the hypothetical Eighth Avenue project. One was based on the way the current policy reads. And the second was based on the proposed that you're going to be discussing tonight. The biggest change to that between the two policies is going to be the commercial, industrial, and the properties that are not residential. So we'll use those, those two scenarios or those two, yeah, those two scenarios tonight. And kind of compare that with the policy. And then on the board over there, I've kind of broken down how we got to a lot of that and the way that it broke, broke out. So on the left is the proposed for local improvements, no load factors, none whatsoever. We stick with sanitary main like by front foot, sanitary service by the each water main, front foot, water services each. General work by the area storm sewer by the area street and the front foot. We're just going to stick with that. To the right, you're gonna see we have regional. That's where we're going to start getting into use factors. Local improvements typically haven't got a lot of opposition because they are petitioned by a developer and only affect developers' property for the most part, or at least the majority of the property. Regional is a much wider area for benefit. Hence why it affects for existing residents and the proposed and future residents. So it's based off a residential equivalent unit, one per parcel. So if you have a platted land, take Southdale Farm 6, and there's 60 lots in there. There's 60 each. Other is two equivalent units. So it's twice of what a residential is. That's considered like multifamily, church, school, parks, ponds, commercial, industrial. With the two equivalent units, those are typically larger lots. So we've discussed density. And what we have up there is a density of three units per acre. And that is based on the suburban use in the comp plan. A lot of the Horus future land use is classified as suburban. And suburban is a unit of three to five units per acre. Commercial, like I said, industrial is all part of that. So we're also introducing something called the project driver, which is an additional half of an equivalent unit as an acknowledgement of requesting the improvement. So if you have a subdivision that needs offsite improvements that are typically resident or regional in nature, you would have an additional half an equivalent unit on those lots to account for the project driver, whereas the existing residents would be a one. So we've had some discussion. We've met with all of the special assessment commission. We went through this with them. One question that was brought up was, is .5 enough? And Nick did a scenario based on one, and it really doesn't move the needle very much. It's like 100 bucks or roughly 100 bucks, wasn't it?
That's what I was taking off of the non-project driver.
The non-project drivers is like average of $100. So it doesn't really move the needle a whole, a whole lot. So that's for street use. And we are only looking at street use for the modified use factors. When we get down to the water and sanitary sewer use factors, we're doing that per the policy because if you look at we look at go to the other. Use factor. So the way the policy is, you've got three use factor and a water sewer use factor. These didn't seem to be as online as what the 45, 25, 5, 25, 50, 51. So that's, that's where we are. We're only looking at for the street use for the sewer. So regional storm sewer, if the project only has a regional storm sewer, we're using area as, as a a method of assessment. And traditionally, the regional storm, the larger the lots, is kind of acting as its own use factor. You have an 80 acre parcel, it's acting kind of as its own, own use factor. Undeveloped in the upper right over there, we have, the policy does allow for the removal of 30% for right-of-way dedications. We haven't done that a whole lot in the past. But it's something that the, that was brought up during the plating and of the during the policy. And I don't think that's too atypical. We have multifamily and other, and what they have right there. Oh, that's Adam's comment there. So that's how we, we treated it as, as a multifamily, which was what was the spacing on that one here? You had multifamily was a three plus one times the acres.
Because of the three equivalent units.
That's if nobody's in there. So if, yeah, if somebody's living in it, then it's off of the units. And then if it's a, a project driver, say if there's 20 people living in there, then it would be assessed at 30 units because of that .5.
The project driver.
Correct, yeah.
So does everybody kind of understand what's being proposed? Maybe not the in detail of it, but just kind of the general idea of it. So it's a one, a two, and a .5 is basically what works out with a density of three units per acre. The three units per acre, we had talked about with the special assessment commission that just in kind of briefing them on this. And it's was generally accepted amongst them. Obviously, it's council decision. But that's where we, where we had to start from.
What were the, what were the conversations centered around?
Is it enough?
That's what, and that's what was going to be my question to you. I guess I was going to have you delve into that a little bit more. I mean, is it enough to acknowledge the use if it's like a like I mentioned, like an apartment building or something?
Yeah. And that's where the three units per acre times the two use factor, it does start compounding. So it, it, it does add up a bit. And the size of the lot is still very much in play with this. Larger lots, larger assessments, et cetera. So.
So if you had two acres.
You have six.
Six units.
Yep.
Has to.
Yep, it's gonna be 12 by the time we're all said and done. It'd be a 12x.
And then probably development. Factor.
Probably, yeah. So add another six on top. That's 18. If you were to have a six, would you say sixplex?
Oh, she said a two acres.
Oh, two acres, two acres, yes. Two acres with three per acre.
2.5 times three.
Yeah, yeah, that extra half, yeah.
So it'd give you 15.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what Brenton put up there is what I have shown on the board there is the three use factors of how it was calculated in the beginning. And it, it just was eminent or evident that the bottom churches, the schools, industry, the commercial, and potentially even some of the public was a little bit out of, it was subsidizing, I wouldn't say subsidizing, but it was reducing the residential.
Yeah, I'll write on, I'll write on here in just a minute. The, what we do for water sewer, if I could read it off real quick for you, too, is single-family residential for water sewer. It's just one per parcel. Multifamily is one per unit. Public is one per acre. Churches is 1.3 per acre. Schools 1.3 per acre. Industrial and commercial are two per acre. So it gives you a comparison of what we have in our current policy for water and sewer use factoring. Now, one of the challenges with what we have current there though is like multifamily. Let's say you know, in our future land use map, we say here's multifamily. We don't know how many units are going to be there. We can't predict the future of how many units are going to be built. So that's one of the things we're trying, we're trying to simplify that, those categories. So that's why we're saying, single family or other.
And I think that's one of the things that Sarah
had concerns about.
Had concerns about is that the land is with, without knowing exactly what's going on, and we're taking a shot in the dark, trying to figure out how to properly assess them. And they could come in with a multi, you know, multi-unit property and be quite different than what our estimate is. So you take a larger apartment building and there's Sarah, take a larger apartment building and that could have a problem.
How was that? It was like Jim was making.
We were just talking about you. All the things, all the.
I just got off the plane and ran over him. Because, yeah, well, we were just discussing it because it's a concern then that a larger apartment building under the current scenario is going to get a sweeter deal, for lack of a better word.
Well, let's say, let's say you have, like I said, they're saying if you have a tract of land, you know, it's very likely to be like an apartment building. But we don't know how many units, then we're we, we don't have anything to stand on saying, oh, it's going to be this number. Or we'd have to do averages or assumptions.
The other thing, the other thing to note is that there is not a deferred special unless it's 100% for egg. There's a two-year deferral if it's going to stay egg. But deferral, obviously, you have to carry the, the cost some way, but the developer may show their cards in that two-year period, maybe, maybe not. It's just there isn't a way for, at least I'm told, there's not a way for the city to defer some of these specials.
Not ideally. And then the other thing too is, let's say you have, we have a good idea overall. Nothing, it's never perfect, but in general, we have a good idea where are you going to have a single-family residential versus not, or greater potential of it. You know, there's going to be some flexibility and some adjustments here or there. But in general, we have a, a good idea of it's going to be your single family or not. Now with these different categories we have right now, you get a situation or dynamic where we're assuming you're going to have a church. I'll take Lakeview for example, because a good example for discussion is Lakeview was owned by the diocese. And if we would have had this approach 10 years ago, and land got special assessed, it would have been a church rate 25 per acre. But then they go and develop it with residential. That one, you know, they would have specials at 25 per acre, not one. And you can't go back and re-allocate those specials like that. So it gets complicated from that angle. So what we're trying to do is simplify it also to where it gives greater flexibility of that other category. Because we know there's times where land changes hands. So that was another thing we were looking at. At least I know Jim and I talked about it a lot. Those, what, how do we mitigate those type of situations?
Should we move it back down to two per acre or are we at three per acre?
Based on suburban in the comp plan.
Yeah. We, we've got a bunch of people in our community that are already barking about the special assessments and the weight that we're putting out to the family residential. I don't agree with this.
So if, if it's platted, it's a one regardless of the size. When you get to the undeveloped, where the density comes into play. If it's been platted, like Adelman's, take Adelman's, take Southdale Farm 6, it's count the lots divided up. It's pretty straightforward. It's when you get into the area, say along 64 from the south side where there's 10 acres there of on the future land use map is suburban, which is three to five units per acre. Is it going to be that? By God, I don't know. I could, there's been talk of commercial on 64. So by treating it, the suburban and the commercial at a density of three units per acre, you have less of a chance at being really long, maybe?
It makes somewhat kind of sense that they kind of stayed it fell that way, but the commercial and industrial, like we had, Brenton put up there, I mean, it, it's pretty high.
Well, the other, and Sarah, you're so you know, it's, this is applicable, the load factor or proposal is applicable for regional projects only. Local would be done how we've done. There isn't a load factoring component within local. Local, because that's typically your local improvements for a development or an isolated project in the neighborhood or something like that. You wouldn't have the load factoring into a project like that. Load factoring applies to just your regional and so your larger projects that impact the greater area.
And we compared this to other communities that utilize the special assessment policy locally to see how it compares.
So it's, it varies.
I've never in my life seen industrial, commercial at the same and churches and schools at the same. I mean, we spent a lot of money to have a consultant come in and give us an idea of where we're at. And now just off the cuff, because the developers are upset because they're like, well, the specials are going to be too high for commercial.
And too low on residential.
And too low on residential. We're looking at making a change. I don't want this to be driven by the developers, right? It needs to be fair for all. And so that's something that we need to look at. And I'm just not settled on how these are, you know, one, 1.3 and two. I, I really think that it needs to be spread out more.
So that's an hypothesis now.
You know, having nothing, right, which I get, all the way to, okay, we brought the consultant in, we're, we're breaking it out. We're a little bit far. And now we're oversimplifying it. I think there has to be something in the middle. And I think that the industrial and commercial needs to be higher. I really do.
So this stays. This stays what it is. This is what we're talking of, street use only. The water one, we didn't think that was out of line. It's, it's the, it's the street use factor. So I think, what do you base that on? Is it the future land use map, which is the way the policy kind of leads it along? But then we get into, take South of 64. It's shown as suburban in the future hate map. Is it, is it going to be suburban? I don't know.
You're talking when they're getting, when, when, for instance, those parcels get roped into a regional assessment district. You're like, well, they're earmarked for suburban, right?
Let's just take 64th, for example, because 64th Avenue is going to have residential. It's going to have the parcels right now that are south of 64th Avenue. They're going to have the ones north of 64th Avenue to the city limits. And Deer Creek Estates, second and the third, first, second and the third. Deer Creek Estates, first, second, and third, count them. One, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 for all three of those. But there's a large parcel on the northeast corner of the roundabout at 64 that is kind of a what's it, what's it going to be? So.
I'm gonna see, I'm gonna bring up the future.
Talking about Deer Creek Estates?
Yep, in the Deer Creek Estates. I'll show you where I'm talking about. One or you're talking about two and three?
Northern's corner. The O S I have that for a long term.
This is right now, residential, residential. This gets to be the goofy part. So this is the 64th Avenue roundabout. And if we go to suburban. Ooh, teacher, the flume. Right now, the flume has that area. And this is wrong, so. It's the butt. How does it come up with what the color is?
Just go to the, by John, the far left.
Oh, yeah, that'll work. It is.
Contact development.
Contact development. And this is urban. This is suburban. So all of this would be suburban. Based on the future land use map, which is the three to five units per acre.
Meaning that would be their allocation on 64.
Be based on three units per acre. But we know that this here is going to be a church now, potentially. Being discussed to be a church. You know, down, down here, there's a school. You know, down here, there's a big park parcel. And we know all of this, I'm a little bit off, is, is going to be Sunset Valley, which is I don't even know what the density is of Sunset Valley, but it's probably more than three units per acre, the way that it sits. So the future land use map is, is good at that, but I don't know if it's all over to a T, but it's what we had to use. So if we have a way of reading into the crystal ball and knowing what things are going to be, I will with you. I write there, commercial, industrial.
There's a, there's a part of me in this conversation that recognizes too the importance of developer driver in this conversation. Because, I mean, I hope I'm completely on point here, but let's say, for instance, this instance, for lack of a better example, somebody pulled the trigger on this. Well, it's, it's the robot. Somebody pulled the trigger on the improvements. A developer pulled the trigger on the improvement. And that's why we have the regional, correct? So it's kind of like they're, they're the ones that are throwing their hat in the ring first. So I think yeah, evaluation of the development driver, like, you know, you kind of mentioned that, did you, did you mean that .5 versus one wasn't, was a negligible difference?
Yeah.
Or did you mean it's negligible? I guess I would ask that is
Depends on the assessment.
Is one.
It depends on the district.
Is one of the enough then for the development drivers? Because they're the ones that are throwing in the hat in the ring that is creating what is currently happening. And those other parcels that are maybe suburban, but might be something in the future. They're along for the ride. And this guy or gal threw their hat in the ring first. They're the development driver. It's really important to me that we get that number right, too. And I'm sure you agree on that, too. I see your concerns. And I think this is another way to this is important to me, too, because they're dragging everybody else in the region along for the ride. And and that's important to me, that it's acknowledged.
And it's happening more and more. I mean, we're, we're having a lot more regional projects because of new development. So I agree with.
That, that's something on a staff level that we're working in when these are, these subdivisions are brought to you, is to identify very early on what the offsite improvements are with a rough cost and what it's going to take to get them there to maybe well, to have you guys have more information to be able to make a decision on what the true, true impact of a subdivision will be.
Because I, I don't love that.
River, perimeter.
We, we dragged people along for the ride.
And they were just fine. You know?
You want to pull up an example?
Can we, can we look at maybe increasing?
I think, I think, I think it'd be helpful for the council to see where we currently are with our current policy. And where where this concept takes it to.
For the dollars?
The second sheet.
It was really, it was really small.
Second sheet.
It was really, it was small. And that's why I think it will work best for you.
That's good. I didn't scroll to the second page.
I put it all in one PDF.
And also, this is
Be efficient and then
It was my error.
I didn't look at the second sheet.
And this is also, you know, overall feedback from council. You know, we're talking the concept to see how a scenario works.
Yeah, I think that's helpful to just kind of get you high around that.
So let's, let's look at this parcel here. Ken, Ken the Kent secretary came in and he talked about this parcel being proposed to be assessed at
First of all, oh, you see it just once. So you own that now.
Well, okay, fine. Well, you see it just. So $49,259. And it was going to be 1.9 acres. Water and sewer factor, 3.9, and the street use factor of 48.2, which got us, like I said earlier, to a assessment of almost $50,000. You look at what we're, what, what's being proposed. Jumps or is reduced to a 5.8 a 5.8 equivalent unit. And the cost of $16,114. Now, let's look at the residential. We'll use 3rd and 4th Street. So 2064, 2064 to 2784, the 3rd and 4th Streets. So it's like $500. Or so. Between the two scenarios, yeah. So the commercial goes down because there's a whole bunch of other land like ponds and the city has a ton of land in this district with the lagoons and, and other stuff. So that takes up a bulk of it. But it brings, like, like I said, whatever it was, a couple of hundred, $500, $600.
And I want to stress this, just a scenario. It's not a
Yeah, don't get hung up on the numbers because
It, it's just to show how it's working.
Taking a real-life application with kind of estimated numbers.
That's why I tried to ask Jim to make sure he has on there saying preliminary for discussion or whatever.
Yeah, don't, don't publish this and say that's what the special is going to be.
Yeah.
It's watermarking two places, yeah.
Yeah. So
So let's look at the larger parcels.
Okay.
Off to the right there.
Like the lagoon?
Yes, I'm curious.
So the lagoon, let's go back here. And this one was the original, correct, around we have 38,000, 56,156. 52, 78, and 211. So 40,000, 50,000 on that one. 56 to 76, 38, 50, 51.
So that works great, right? In a scenario like this, where we have four dense residential properties and everybody goes up by, you know, 500 bucks on the lower end, it's 2,000. Okay, I get it. What about in neighborhoods like Lust River or mine, where the lots are much larger? And we've got much larger commercial slash industrial areas that need to be covered. I mean, we're talking a difference of, of almost doubling the factors for the residents there that have been there for a long time, right?
The you're talking about from the policy to, to what's being proposed is the doubling? So we all know what kind of triggered this. If you look at Southdale Farms, Southdale Farms, one and three had an assessment of like 45,000, let's say.
Well, Southdale one was in the low, like low to mid 30s. And with their, for, no, for residential lots. So then with the, with this year, what we currently have for street use factoring and how that was broken out, what Jim had originally showed it to be around 17,000.
Yes, which is about half. Yeah, which is about half of what it.
So what. So then, what ended up happening is those specials, the developer came in, you know, this is a concern, and here's why their concern was that. All those other uses are offsetting the cost drastically, and it's not, it's, it's.
And it isn't.
It's not.
Specific.
Not comparable.
Happened on Lakeview.
It happened on Lakeview, yeah.
We had residential lots with like thirteen thousand dollar specials, where the first edition of Lakeview was thirty five thousand dollars, and it's like, what's the difference?
So, so then. What ended up being certified by council was more comparable to where Southdale first was at. And that was brought in, I think they ended up being certified around thirty five thousand, maybe upper thirty.
Thirty seven or thirty eight.
And that made sense from the angle, from the angle of. The cost for the project was slightly more, or it was more than for Southdale third. Than Southdale first, similar size project. And what we're seeing too, you know, costs are going up, they've gone up over the last couple of years, not down. So you, you would typically wouldn't see like your residential lot be half the price of a, of a. Lot that was certified a couple of years ago. That wouldn't make sense.
I, I just recalled when I purchased my home in West Fargo, I was in Westport Beach, two thousand and seven. My parcels were thirty six thousand dollars.
Probably a lot, isn't that?
Third of an acre. Okay? Pretty normal. Other lots were forty, forty five for some of the larger lots, I mean, that was a, a very common thing. And so we're talking about these developments, and obviously they have smaller lots, go back to where the policy is currently.
Uh, you mean? This one?
Yep. And then click on. With our street use factor, because that obviously is what I can compare. Because that is what drove the special assessments on my lot in West Fargo. So pull that up, what it would have been under the current policy. Yep. So. I'm not sure, I'm just looking overall. Do we have something that's a third of an acre there?
Uh.
There's, there's one that shows acreage on it, that other map.
So we've got half acres, we, we, here's third.
There's a bunch over there, that corner a lot, too.
But those are all done, yeah.
So.
We are.
We are.
We're, 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 we're talking about a hypothetical.
I was just gonna point that out.
Yeah. Correct, they're all existing up there, you need to find new development, which makes things easier, perfectly obvious.
Well, for, for your example, when you talked about your neighborhood. Did you mean that you're existing though? So. Would she be in each? In a, in a regional district?
Yeah, regional districts, so existing parcels like that.
We don't, I don't wanna penalize people that have larger yards.
So they'd be a one, because it's, it goes to an each.
Regardless of size.
So if your, if your residential lot is five acres, or if it's a third acre. One. Now, if it's a area that is. We know is gonna be certified out, you know, it's a, it's a parcel, maybe thirty acres. And it's just an empty field, but it's say a future addition of a development or something, you see that, that's where it goes into equivalent units, because we have to factor in somehow to have that fair. So we use equivalent units for if it's not developed yet, but we know, you know, it actually could.
What's driving this request?
It's overall feedback, well, we have feedback from, we've had feedbacks.
Developers.
Well, not, it's not, it's not just developers, we've had developers, we've had.
No, they're the ones that requested us to have the conversation.
And I'm going off of, that's where we've had feedback, schools, developers, parks, uh, churches, uh. And even during Eighth Avenue, we used this area as an example, but earlier discussions, I was trying to figure, okay, what can be done of the load factoring, because we had the situation when. Eighth Avenue was earlier, say, you know, first round of eighth, well, whatever, on the one, earlier this year. Um, the potential specials based on the policy showed some areas extremely high, like the parcel, you know, one of the parcels Jim was talking about earlier, if you scroll down just a little bit. CHS lot, City Owens and the PetroServe one, that one there, those numbers are on two hundred and fifty thousand. Their current policy, what the project cost at the time, this is a different scope project here.
Prime commercial sale, right along County Road seventeen, I'm sorry, it's not cheap, guys.
So that's, so it's going off of.
Right on County Road seventeen, you're gonna pay for it.
But this is, so it was going off of overall concerns, feedback, reception from our load factoring. It wasn't just one party saying, hey, this is a concern, it was about every single. Uh, area within the load factoring components, there were concerns expressed. So, but okay, let's look at this, we've, I know Jim and I. Uh, Jeff and Cory and Matt on occasion, we were trying to find solutions, how can some, a concept be brought forward to the council for discussion? For quite some time, just trying to figure out what is even feasible, to even have a realistic conversation, and this is, this is where we're at.
During our conversations. My first concern, which took all of what, ten seconds looking at the whiteboard?
Yeah.
How do you defend it? Literally, how do you defend it? We, we went from a consultant with.
Commercial being same, how do you defend churches and schools being same? I, I mean, I get it, you do a one for everybody across the board, that's trying to make it more fair, but I mean. We've got some fairly high special assessments in this community as it is, I just don't see putting more on the residents, I really don't. And, and I understand we wanna drive commercial development, so is there a way to do that? I think there is, I don't see this as the way right now. I think that we've gone to here, now we're oversimplifying it, I think there's something in the middle, and I would prefer to see the weighting with industrial and commercial differing. I would prefer to see the weighting with churches and schools different, schools are publicly funded, churches obviously are privately funded. I, I don't think we're there yet with those items, and it's not to say that we can't get there, I think we can simplify, but I think we're far too old on the commercial and industrial. And I think there's a happy medium, we went from forty nine thousand down to, what was it?
Uh, seventeen.
Eighteen?
Eighteen thousand.
Somewhere in the middle, right? Somewhere in the middle, prime commercial frontage, right on County Road seventeen, I mean, we're at half, fifty thousand to eighteen thousand, okay? Let's settle somewhere, twenty eight thousand, thirty thousand, you know, I mean, I just don't see how commercial and industrial can be weighted the same, I don't see how churches and schools can be weighted the same.
What do you think about the development driver?
I'm not sure yet.
I'm not either.
It, it hasn't been explained fully to me, I, I know that last time we spoke, there was a development driver that could be added. I think you've got a lot of existing people, we're, we're such a unique community, where we have so many people that have been here for ten, twenty, thirty years. And now all of a sudden, some of this new development's coming in and is pushing all of this, and these people are feeling the burden, I just got added to another special assessment district, right? The explanation, well, you're just in a bad area, well, I'm sorry, I was here first, you know? So, I, I, I'm, I'm kind of wondering, how does this work, and the development driver, what can we do to make it fair for the people that have been here? That are going to get the benefit of these penalties, don't get me wrong, right, these are benefits, these are huge things, we wanna drive the commercial, we want that sales task space.
But they've, they've come asking for it, and they, they aren't looking for upgrades.
Exactly.
And then all of a sudden, they're told, well, now we have to upgrade you because, 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 and that, that hurts them.
I know the pain.
Yeah.
More than anyone.
Yeah, well, I mean, I got the same thing going on, I'm gonna have three or four special assessments myself, so.
I'm, I'm sitting here going, how do we make this fair? And I, I think it's just interpretation, but I'm not comfortable putting more on the residents. And dropping so drastically.
So when you say residence, you mean existing residents, because the new ones. And that's where they wouldn't get that additional point five, that, that would be the petitioning body to take.
The point five is only.
No, no, I'm saying going up to another, to a one is marginal, it, it's not a huge.
Difference from point five to the one.
What if it was, I mean.
Well, there's two.
I realize it's just a number, but what if it was a bigger number, and I recognize you're saying. In a regional, the existing residents aren't gonna get tagged for the developer portion of it, it's just the new.
Right.
That's coming in. I know, is that, is that the play, maybe?
We'll look at Horseshoe Bend, Horseshoe Bend had its own, its trailer park on six, north of sixty, or west of seventeen. They had their own single cell lagoon that had an unpermitted discharge. And they needed to get that lagoon gone. City installs, constructs lift station thirteen on the corner of Deer Creek Parkway and County Road seventeen. Would that have to have been installed when it was? Probably not, but Horseshoe needed it, and as Horace, in their service area, it was up to Horace to service that area. Now that thirteen is done. Sunnyside is using that, and I'll be darned if Deer Creek Estates first, second, and third can't be developed now because of that.
Well, I made it to where we, we are doing one lift station instead of doing two lift stations or three.
All this stuff on here.
To where we have the, for Horseshoe Bend, and another one for another development, another one for another one, it was consolidating them all together to be more efficient.
So we didn't install gravity mains east on sixty fourth avenue as part of the lift station thirteen project, we put the station in, we put a gravity main over to Horseshoe Bend. And we put a force main into the connection to Fargo and Deer Creek. Now, as part of sixty fourth avenue, the regional collector, we're bringing sewer over and up to sixty fourth, so now that sixty fourth avenue corridor. On the north side of sixty fourth, where you've got those large, large lots, that I think quite a few of them are developer owned, are now gonna have the ability. Do something with that without having to have a subject tank on it, and that might be the catalyst that they need to actually do something with it. So. There, where, where is, what is the starting? Should Horseshoe Bend be on a, at a two, two and a half, a three?
Well, that would be an example of a driver.
That's the driver, can we all agree with that? I mean, they petitioned for the project, they needed it, in the city service area, it's the most. It's the correct way to go forward, that's what was done.
So they get the driver, what about the other people that have piggybacked up on this stuff?
So we, we haven't done this one, we put together a, a preliminary, but we tack the project driver on those areas that can now be developed because of it. But.
So they get a project driver as well?
One on the north side of the road, yes, because it's owned by developers.
Well, it's being developed.
It's being developed.
Well, then to a lesser extent, was there people on subject tanks that could eventually in the future, but they weren't, they weren't assessed the same rate that people that needed it currently.
They're not a driver.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there is still the way. To take. Those instances into account. But. Nobody here can argue that infrastructure doesn't cost money, and ultimately somebody has to pay for it, it's just like, we can't dictate, you're gonna put a lift station for two hundred thousand dollars, it is done. I wish we could, it'd be great, but we can't do it that way.
So what if we adjusted, because I mean, we're looking at, single family residential is one per parcel. Multi-family residential, one per unit, what's the difference there?
We're of the apartment, that's where we are like.
We wouldn't know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Don't tell me, you know, I hate to say it, but, I mean, you're, we're gonna have one apartment, so we get a one to share, and then they build an eighteenplex. I know that the, the, the new source doesn't allow an eighteenplex or whatever, but. But it's.
But who is to say, you know, what is it gonna be in five years? Or ten years? Or they do it as a PUD, that allows it to, you know, there, there is different, different methods and different factors and. Yeah. So that's why we're trying to have it be.
One per parcel, one per unit, public parks, one per acre is currently five per acre. Churches, one point three, they're currently twenty five, I mean, why, why don't we do more of a sliding? That's the old, I know, but I'm looking at the new one.
The new ones over there.
This is worse.
One, 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 two, and one point five.
So you can look at the whiteboard, here's crime.
So why don't we mirror the new more off of the current? In ratios in the same, right, so.
If you were to look, Kate Brennan, grab your marker. So basically, what you're saying is that, single family residential would stay one. A multi-family residential would be proportionate, would be one per unit, so what would we think that that would be?
I don't know, they have a heck of a lot higher load on sewer than residential does.
So sewer is what, one point? One point one, go back to that, one point, one per unit, and, and that's kind of, let's skip, let's skip that one, let's go to public.
I, I'm just saying, I mean, take it, take it to one, one point three, something like that, I mean, a, a multi-family resident's gonna have a much higher load. On your sewer than a single family residence, which is why I don't agree with the fact that you have them.
In the street, in the street.
Correct.
Yep, no, I, I see it.
So I, my personal opinion, and take it or leave it, would be that that should be adjusted, right? Even though you might have more people in a smaller area, you still are going to have a higher load, so I would say that that should be adjusted. Same thing when you get into public parks, obviously, we've got a one to five, we're still proposing a one per acre, why, we in the middle, right? Where are we at?
Are you units per acre times the two?
So what happens, you have two equivalent unit, or two. But then you have the equivalent units, so two times three, so actually, what really happens here is that you have. For this scenario, parts of all the spaces would really be like a six to a one. And if it's. If it is a project driver, the residential would be one point five, this would be seven point five.
Okay.
So they do have, when you're, this would be like seven point five residential lots per acre. That's how, how the map comes out.
And also the same for church, school, parks.
And this is per acre, yeah, so all, this would be your other, how it really translates it out, so you have a one, one point five, six, seven point five, it's just that we go one. And then a two, but the two halves do translate equivalent.
Okay, so let's take a look at churches. Do the same thing.
Well, this is what you're breaking up, this is what you're doing.
Church will be the same thing. Simple and vibrant.
Six, seven point five, why are they the same?
Cause it's multi-family church, school, park, and pond.
They like.
With the other.
They're all in the other category.
They're all in other, how, how do we justify that?
Yeah.
They have a higher use, but they also. They have, they could have a variety of different uses, you could have a commercial that has fairly little daily traffic, and you have a commercial that has a ton of traffic. You, you have, so if you're gonna say, well, I'll take like a, an insurance agent, commercial. So they would have, let's say they have a one acre lot, just for the conversation, one acre, they'd be out fifty. But they only generate ten cars per day. They have McDonald's that generates hundreds of cars per day, but they're at a fifty per acre also. Yeah, that's our saying is, we can't, we, we can't, we don't have the crystal ball, we will say exactly what to use, the city was already built out, and everything was already used. Going specific to the units for multi-family, going to commercial, we could even break it down, type of commercial, things like that, you'd have, you could do that. But we. We don't have that nailed down of what is actually, exactly going to be where.
And, and to that point, though, we can't, at least from my perspective, I can't worry about that, because we just had that whole talk about a, you know, a lot that, you know, wanted to move the commercial over there. And it could have been any kind of commercial, so you have to just treat it as commercial, not the type of business is going into a piece of property. So from my perspective, I'm looking at that as, well, doesn't say it could be there for maybe one, two years, close shop, and all of a sudden, something else goes in there. So I can't. So I can't, I can't worry about. The actual name of the business that's in a certain location. I have to just worry that it is commercial in that location.
But you also have the dynamics goes. Earlier, earlier was, uh, you may have situations where with this. You doubt like a church or industrial, or church or commercial, well, the use may be changed from what we originally were expecting. And then they were assessed at that fifty. Or they may be assessed at, say, like a church. They're assessed at fifty, but then church buys like commercial property, they're at that fifty. It, it throws it off. Or you get a situation where maybe a church held on the land, sold land, developed out. Now they got commercial there, but they were assessed at a twenty five, not the fifty. That's where we're trying to come from the. Yeah, these, the, it's just a number so that the uses change. We're able to lock it down more. Because in general. Yep. You're, you're not, you're less likely to have a commercial area that changed to a single family.
So, so I'm gonna ask the question.
And we'd have.
How do other cities handle that? You know, um, you, you, you look at, uh, your scenario. It, it goes from one tap is only to another. They don't go back and change what's already been assessed. You just, you have to take what it was at the time. And.
In a certain degree, because if somebody were to buy a forty acre parcel and then subdivide it the next year after there's been assessment on there, the city just go back and reallocate. The amount of the.
Redistribute them.
Redistribute to those lots.
Or the subdivided.
If they're subdividing to different parcels, I understand that.
That weight, you're at that load factor.
Amount doesn't change, it's just squeeze the ball a different way.
Yeah, correct. It's just broken out, we average out per acre for the, um, yeah, it's on the area typically. So. How do other cities do it? A lot of the cities have different ways.
So what is a common way of doing like regional improvements is contribute a lot of money, city contributes more money to it. Seeing that that's kind of drying up in some places to, is the ability to be able to contribute.
And have we gone to a place where we can contribute under regionals?
Yes. Which you are.
We're targeting twenty five percent. Now, in five, ten years, we might be able to up that. It, it, but looking at our, our dynamics right now, the twenty five gives it, gives us the ability to where we can. Be up to par with the different projects that we have facing us. We're able to still be there. If we were to go up with a bigger contribution, that's gonna be a lot harder to be able to do your different regional projects. And then, then you'd be in a situation where like some cities, you know, Fargo was looking at. Reset, reevaluating their contributions towards. Cost sharing. They have a higher percentage of cost sharing. They're going, okay, we need to reel this in. We need to reduce the amount of cost sharing. I don't know what their final outcome was, if they even have a final outcome on it. I don't know if you've heard that or not, Jim, but it was, they, they were evaluating that. They were looking at that going, okay, can we do this? Is the same ball, is it the right percentage? And let's see, we're gonna have to face that every once in a while. We evaluate what is appropriate cost share, but. I'd love to be able to do a bigger cost share at times, but like I said, we have to be able to still. Maintain what we have. Could that number be different? One, two? Also, if you have something. You prefer.
My, I'll be using the slide, but you know, I'm uncomfortable, but I guess I'm just curious, do you have a, I need your thought on this?
Well. The, I guess where you all are going. In my mind, to be quite honest, a lot of the things you said or that brought up, the current system is based on. It was consulted by your on-traffic pattern, on, on. Well, simplifying it, yes. As far as the load factoring part goes, I think the special assessment community has assessed now, like the favorite load factoring. For not load back as far as development drivers, excuse me.
Development driver.
Development. Because, yeah, because we see. The pieces that like now, I just saw the map last, but I haven't had a chance to read it, right? Yeah, all the concerns you presented are things that I've. That are front of mind. Bring the same spot. One thing, you know, I, and this doesn't sound familiar, but it's like. You know, where this, where this comes from is that the developers, developers are asking for this. Endgame, you know, and, you know, that's been off in your games. So it's just like, that's where it's like, you've all are mapped to me. It's like something I wanna make sure. Not put on, not that.
And I, I think we want to be fair. I, I agree with you completely, you know, when, when developers are asking for something, obviously they're seeing something different elsewhere and that they wanna make their box right. I get it, but. There's a cost to having some of these amenities in our community. And I think what we're facing is a reluctance. On the part of developers to actually develop the commercial because the specials are higher.
So I, I do want to stress this is not just developer feedback. This is churches, schools, commercial. This isn't just in parks. It's basically almost pretty much every cat over in front.
Not residential.
But Brent, we have heard out of the mouth.
I, and I'm not discounting that.
We had a development that was supposed to be bonded how many times? Two times?
With development.
We were gonna work on, uh. Deer Creek.
Deer Creek Parkway.
And they pulled out two times and they were supposed to have commercial up there. And that was spoken very loud and clear. We're not coming. Right now, because we don't like what you're doing with your specials. But then you have another same kind of situation where they're like, oh, we, I mean, we changed the numbers.
And, and I can't speak for them on that, so what they do, you're gonna have those different.
It is true. And so it, it's like, you know, all these, all the residents want all these amenities in town and then. Well, then it's like, well, then council seems to be the bad guys and we're like. You know, stop, we're stopping the, the commercial, which is, which is completely not, not true.
And that's why I'm saying.
But they have, but they have. They have prime real estate, though, like you said. And I mean, the landfill here is expensive.
So what I would ask is. We're, we're speaking, I feel like we're speaking our real estate of if there's a media, happy medium. Where does the council see that happy medium? Cause you know, Jim and I could plug in, we, we, we all could plug in different numbers. But. We had different, we had goals of try to simplify, try to keep it where. It's pretty direct, introduce a project driver. We're, we're looking at these different components going, okay. What we have before, you guys. Knocks out quite a bit of it. Is it going to be perfect on every situation? No, it's not. Um, and I, I will not ever say that because how many times are we said, hey, we found the, the perfect situation? Nope. And over and over. So are we going to have situations that are not the most ideal? Yeah, we are. But. What we're trying to do is find that happy medium. And is this something, whatever, whatever the council ends up doing. In regards to load factoring, are you probably going to have a discussion then a couple of years, you know, two, let's say two years? Possible. So. Where, where do we fall? And I'll take also like, like I was saying, you know, the feedback wasn't just from one. Party, even council was asking it when we were talking eight. A while back, there are concerns about that load factoring. And that's what we were trying to do is trying to provide a solution to resolve. That's what we're trying to do. Have a number. Have a bunch of numbers up here. Let's talk them through. Put that through. But up there, like to be able to keep the ball moving at some point, what I would ask at a, at a mill or council consider is. Are we? Are we really trying to tackle load factoring in regards to regional? Be okay with separating out, uh, finding load factoring. Cause that would help us quite a bit when it comes to moving forward with the certification process.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're up.
For lots of different, that will help, that would help, you know, we have a variety of different projects, but it makes those great type of drive for us. If we're not feeling a full factory within local, so I can develop.
The more question of local, which I apologize, I maybe already asked it before, but with the local. There is still a combination of room to do with each of those projects for adding.
You can do it, yeah.
Okay, I think you had just mentioned, I don't think you mentioned each, I just wanted to make sure it's still an option.
Streets, from the street component.
Yeah.
Take a look at each.
Okay.
Front footage.
Area.
An area, those are the most common angles that say is taken. I mean, we have a project, what about four or five years ago, was what it does in houses. Trying to think of the one they did.
Well, it's any third.
Yeah. Yeah, that one is a project and petition of doing each.
There was a petition project, uh, there was a grading and a paving project. You did it, came time to the special assess. It was like a hundred percent petition. And rather than do it based on lot size, they always said, well, everybody's the same, we're already subsized, they all ended up with it. Whatever the dollar amount was.
Cause I see the arguments on both sides, but I just wanna make sure it's still a residential.
Yeah. Owners, that is assessing commission, set era, Jim. Even the ability to work with the developer of figuring out what works, cause at the same time too. They got local slots. You know, they're running goal, deal with that development on the local. They gotta figure it out. Uh, but it does give. All the different levels of the certification process. Some flexibility. And like, like you're saying, a lot of the planes, we're, we're really trying to figure this out of where the complaints come from. Just we have the. Now, you film and I and Cory, we had quite a few conversations of where are the claims from? The local is a regional, what is the. We beat that up anyway, so that, that's where it'll be a, a bare minimum. Hopefully for Monday, we can figure out the communities. Break out regional, local from that aspect. And then ironing out the street use factoring, if there are different numbers, also wants us to plug in different numbers. And try to have some different information for the next week, we could do that. So that's where I'm looking for a little guidance.
So the projects that we have to assess this year, so stations thirteen and fourteen. I'm a lot of controversy with that because it's got the use factor. There probably will be some because there isn't existing residential in consolation thirteen, like I said, with Sunny Side. Got self-built parks fourth, that has a regional component for store sort of self-built parks fifth, which is local improvements only. It'd be too big of a deal. Visto addition, where vistos. There is a combination of existing resident, existing businesses or industry or whatever. And there's the ones that aren't, aren't being developed. Or haven't been developed yet. And then we have Lost River Seven, which is a relatively cut and dry subdivision, local improvements, nothing regionally.
So but no street use factoring for certification.
I wasn't gonna say it, but not, not, not this year, but. I guess.
It would help to iron it out.
Well, for surely it would help to iron it out because we've, we've got some projects in the queue. That are, are kind of slowing down because of this, then it would be really nice to keep things moving with accurate information. That will be relatively more representative of what the final outcome is gonna be. It's, I don't like to tell you guys that it's proven they're gonna trust us. And then have it be like, well, I guess I was wrong. It is gonna be that, I, that type of stuff. I don't, I don't wanna get into that, but. Buyers of the land. Are questioning, you know, what are the future specials going to be? Because that's what you said earlier.
Yep.
There's a lot of it's wrong.
The only, the only comment I have is with church and school, without group commercial, I'm like, I guess we're trying to weight that equally. I don't think that's good for anything. And so the commercial, I'd like to stay higher. I think, you know, the example you used eighteen to fifty is, is crazy. I think somewhere in the middle is more fair. And I think that's.
And how, how we get to that, I, I struggled with. If we look at dollar amounts. Is it really looking at the process or is it just a little bit of a game? Because like when Nick started working here, putting together a session, I said, nobody cares about how you got to the number, it's the final number.
Yeah.
And then the final number is all screwed. How did you get to that? And, and it's like, we spent all this time, and if you look at the spreadsheets at the end, they've got column, column up and column up and column, I'm like, hide all that crap. Nobody wants to see it. All they wanna see is my lot, my assessment. And then we go back and it's like, geez, that's.
Right. Schools have a, a heavy weight. I think the school should be higher, the commercials should be higher. I don't disagree with churches and industrial at this point. Parks can go one or the other. That's gonna be based on the driver. And I, I don't think it's fair to put more on the rest of the piece. So I, personally. Those are the changes I would be comfortable with. And I like the driver. I like the development driver. I think that's a good concept. So we're getting somewhere in there. Um. I just think we need a little more happy medium on those two categories, just because. The commercial, like you said, could be McDonald's, could be a insurance. We, we have no way of knowing, so I think that we have to have that a little higher, just because. And the schools with obviously the load of people, I mean, children, adults, my God, you know, all in one area. That's why I think that should be a little higher.
How often is the future future land use map updated, Brendan, typically?
We can update the future land use map whenever we want.
I know, but I'm just saying, is it every month, is this goes through, we go through this and be like, oh, we heard that this is gonna be a.
Yeah.
A circle canyon. We, we heard that this is gonna be a.
Do, do we.
That's why I say.
Pick a business.
Because you can't pick because you don't have the crystal ball. I agree with that. So I say at this point in time, we recognize that obviously the schools are gonna be a little higher, commercial's gonna be a little higher. And buying the churches industrial, the multifamily residential, I just wanna make sure that we're being fair based on the load. And of the number of people in a small area, especially with cars, streets, sewer, the whole nine yards. Other than that, the concept makes sense. The driver, the development driver, I like. I think we're getting somewhere. I think we're just. We haven't quite nailed it yet. That's it.
How big are those apartment buildings up there? Starts here.
Three.
I wanna say.
There's like thirty six.
I was gonna say thirty two or thirty six.
Thirty six, some of them are thirty six.
So they're all the same. Footprint.
It was a hundred and ninety six. I'm remembering something.
You're on one guy divided at five. It's, it's around that thirty to thirty six.
Yeah. And I don't mind, you know, a handful of apartments, obviously, in a growing community makes sense. I just don't wanna see, you know. But for Second Street with Fargo, it's like.
Okay.
I mean, I mean, I get it. Some people like it's, it's nice, especially for a workforce to have a, a temporary place, you know, to live for a year lease or whatever. I get it, but I mean, have it. Fifty of those in this town were not there yet, so I want to spirit that a little bit, you know?
Yes. And I'd like to see the development driver at least at one. I don't, I don't want, it's just say a number. But I, I do feel right now that point five is too low. I think it needs to be one and maybe higher. And I completely agree with Sarah on the. And the.
Schools.
So the, the, the schools, when we did a meeting on this, uh.
And a half, two years ago, Brendan, had a meeting on the city hall, we were done. You guys brought, I put a opinion on the board. Um. They tried to give the impression that they don't use the streets as much as that.
Whatever. The whole, the whole reason that sixty six is a concrete is because of the, the amount of buses. Thank God we did that.
I, I don't disagree. So, so.
I mean, you got that.
But, uh, a couple of months ago, we went over this mark because, uh, this part of the school leadership did, uh, was something to establish for study. Figure out if they are able to. However, this will be, uh, be able to tell a different entity what they're willing to pay for specials.
What? They are willing to pay?
So.
Did I said that correctly?
So what it is, is a study, there, there is a study, even at the state level. Where to evaluate special assessments, impacts, and how they. Hooker should be applied towards logistical subdivision. Towards political subdivisions. Um. That have land, but in more than one pro, more than one jurisdiction. And so you're really looking at like. School districts, county. Southeast gas, for example, entities like that. Um, mainly pushed with. School district angle. Um, but what I'm referring to is to where one of the avenues is sort of where they're pushing for with this in order to. Be able to the school to, to the other political entity. One require that the special assessment file. Negotiated out before the project, to see if you're giving a call, or abilities that where they can knock out the project completely, not be assessed at all. Uh, so there are some different variables at play. And. And where we were. What we're pushing for at that level with your. Right now, we're saying, there's let this, let the cities handle this and let them determine the fairness and try to encourage. You know, being equitable. Across the board, fair, not the ability of another jurisdiction to say, no, we're going to opt out, or no, you have to negotiate out your specials, cause. We don't, we don't do that with other. Property owners will have a district either, if we don't say. Hey, we're gonna. Now, we're gonna negotiate the specials today, set me tomorrow, we don't know if. Okay, thanks for the input, we appreciate them, but in value it. But. Also, let's decide at the end of the day, it'll be a voluntary, it's a constant decision, assessing commission will give recommendation. And that's what we're stressing is, let the processes work out and work through, and not, uh, look like. It's bigger, smaller scale for your. Process.
And I'm all about being able to do what's fair, I mean, the growth that they've brought here and the wonderful facilities. Is fascinating, and I recall that these schools were built, that we worked with them on a number of things, and so. Obviously, we want to continue to invite the smartest schools into our community, and we want to be fair, specials are a concern, we can work on that, however. I don't think that, especially with the bond referendum and the amount of traffic that schools bring, that it's fair to put all of that back on the residents. So again, happy medium, I think this is reasonable.
You want to join the sports district too? Look into that to see if they could.
Then that forty five, I'd be right there.
So, or specific?
Yeah, so, um, and that is actually toned down from the original, what we. Original.
That, well, with it seventy plus, seventy five.
Yep. And so that, that was even to that right there. Thank you for my turn of science.
Very willing to work, that's obviously beautiful, and we want to invite, we agree that. But, and there's, there's, they're still upset, and, and while I realize that it's cost money, they have to realize the amount of wealth that they're bringing into our community, right? So what would we like to do here, would they have? It says discussion and action.
I don't, I don't believe there is an action, it should just for us to talk. And try to figure out, okay. Get an idea of what we're going to go in for the next. So that being, we can talk openly today and not have to spend hours. The next.
The, the action gives the ability to. Yeah, there is, but. Well.
I mean, can we try to talk to project driver at all? And one. I think one at a, at a minimum, but I agree with Sarah that it'd be, there's some where they have to give their commercials. And I don't know what that looks like, but I, I, it's your sense. Into.
Yes, it's working. Work, um, not, but, but kind of, um. You don't really talk about egg at all here. That change in school building, or is that the same?
There is only one piece of property that is still technically paid and kept as a apartment. Very southeast corner of town. Everything else is, um, owned by developer, it may be eight right now, it's owned by developer. And so that's where we're, we're having a hard time with that scenario of. How we plan out. But who's gonna go there? When, you don't know, as far as how many units. It's got, I'm sure. That is our. Hopeful point on that discussion.
Do you want me to, the farms that are found in the city? The. City or near the city that would be in some assessment. Is that changing sometimes?
So that'd be a question, where would you like to get Paul with them?
Well, someone's not within the city, they're not, they're not even assessing the strength.
You could, well, you could establish district. Yeah, they're just not the, they wouldn't be assessed. However, if they were brought into the city and they had assessed them all. City.
That's a good question.
My understand, my understanding is the city, so. And I. If the city had a district that expanded outside the city limits. But that area could come into the city over time or certain, whatever period of time. If there is a special assessment allocated for us that. Are sold. I understand means that the city would have to cover that cost until later days or the specials until. It goes to the city. So do you have, that's a, or you probably have, it should. We should have an area that we address that, so. I think it's good practice to have something in there. But, uh. You're correct, the future land use map doesn't have a lot of.
Oh, no, the current scene, it's open, yes, it makes sound, just outside the city, but. There, there is not a lot.
Cause you have to, you have to get that future land use map, it's like that city. So our complex is twenty forty five. By twenty forty five, what could it look like? And I'm not saying it's gonna be all built out, everything all that way, it's. What, where's your trend pattern going to go? That's what it tells me. Yeah. Does that shift, does that change? Yeah, it does. And are there gonna be updates to it? Yeah.
Sure.
So. But yeah. If you like that, that again, clear, doing off of what we have to categories here. And we've, honestly, we didn't have that got through before, but we've had in there. So you have a single family or the other. There, or we do, we use different routines. How would you prefer that to be?
I remember why we didn't have it. Obviously, you can have that.
I think, I think it's there.
There's really no.
I think it was based on the future language snap, we really.
The acknowledgement of egg and policy, it's just that. If you're actively farming, you get a two years of looking for them.
Okay.
And so it was.
But.
What does that mean?
The assessment will still go on the property, it's just, um. At that point in time, uh, most of it was owned by developer, I don't, they didn't actually have to. Pay the, the interest kept accruing, they just did not actually have to start paying till after that first two years. Um, so that maybe gave them a chance to determine what they're gonna do with the land first before they. Put out. I'd say it's certain payment.
And so it's a way to. The way to hold a landowner accountable in that you just don't get an egg deferral or an egg assessment. With a purchase agreement. Like the next day. You know, the specials get levied on on Monday, Tuesday, you have a, you're selling the egg land. And then it's like, this is a significantly reduced. Assessment for a compact development where it's thirty eight for lots, or forty two for lots, it should be used thirty eight.
Cause we did have a district or an area in town where. Once the fruit happened.
Yeah, I don't.
They were trying specials, they're already set, they already had, they insulted us and tells the first agreement. We've had other trucks laying in the farm here, even more recently that. Had similar of. One. I can do this or that, and they, so, or they have purchase agreements.
And they, and they were in districts. But they were petition, districts petitioned by somebody else. And I mean, I.
So, but.
Somebody else threw their hat.
But they already, they already had like that purchase agreement place or, uh.
But they were.
Sell, it was just not next.
I mean, somebody, somebody throws their hat, the ring and develop, but they drag people along in the region. They threw their hat in the ring.
So.
That was before the request, the petition for improvements was required. It was done when. Kind of just a request for service. And the city initiated it all, I mean. The land, we're talking about Southville Farms. And until the connection with Deer Creek was put in for San Jose sewer. It wasn't gonna go anywhere, that, that, that land wasn't gonna be developed. So. Uh, one thing I wanted to remind you guys of too is that when we assessed Lakeview seventy nine, sixty third and eighty. Second, second or third. The school was assessed at a rate of a hundred and fifty percent. And that did not go over real well. And that. Point five is essentially the percent.
Oh, that's the driver.
That was how we interpreted it, was that everybody else was a hundred percent, they were a hundred and fifty percent, and that, there was some heartburn with that. And would it have been any different if everybody was at, uh, fifty percent or they were a hundred percent? I don't know. But it, it was to acknowledge that. There's a section of land over there that, you know, beans on it or some.
Undergrowth was built. It's differently.
Oh, right.
Different, it was built. Same handle. That. That flow, and that's also where we're coming from of like the regional, so you're asking how to defend that. You know, one argument, and it doesn't get into like. Deep down, you know, like certainly, it's just, well, common sense of it is going, okay. A regional project, if you're other, if you look at the future land use map here. The other type of categories are typically along your arterial road, sometimes your collectors, like such a nine year olds, your arterial, so. Arterial roads, they're on course. So you got seventeen, seventy six. And what we're seeing trending, those sixty fourth, but while I knew, you have these different areas, but. Let's look at seventeen. Seventy six, that area. Well. The ones, uh, if, if we're doing. A section right there. Let's just take it when we did seventy six years ago, or five, six years ago. When we did that project. That ended up being, that should notice.
See why, why, city life says, however, if that was narrowed down. To be.
Maybe a section each way or half a section each way. You'd see right there, you know, we do see where the residential is, is more relevant or more prominent. The part of their way from that arterial road. And then you have the commercial or neighborhood focus or different uses or other categories along. Also. Like what it would take sixty fourth, for example, here, or sixty fourth, where. They're ready to break ground. On that. We know at some point we're gonna have the developer asking for term limits off there. Or they come to develop that at some point, they're gonna attract access up to sixty fourth. Well, for your houses and Southville Farms, they go sixty fourth down the sixty six. Other regional road. Going past schools, park, all that, and then they turn again. And then they get into where the houses are, so they, they're not a direct. Access or that, you know, immediate benefit, they have benefit, but it isn't. As much, and that's where we're coming from on the regional, for example, why they're higher. Because flat out. They're more apt to be closer to that property.
So like Jubilee, they are zoned A. Are they? Assessed. Are they not in this room?
No.
Okay. So they are not assessed for any.
Right.
Cause I was just thinking of maybe an example of the egg situation, right? Um, it's zoned A. It's not the one.
It would be, um, from the southwest end of town where they were still farming. Yeah. There is a farm out there farming, but he's renting from A.
There are three. From the property.
It'd be, maybe you have like farmsteads, you have four, four, if you have farm titles or three, there's pieces.
Right, but up until last year, we had one, one farmer in the southwest end of town.
Oh, you're talking different.
Yeah, correct, obviously, you're talking the same. Or anything.
You're talking different.
Uh, my favorite farmer, okay, so.
There, I believe there's. Anyway, Sarah, I believe there may be like, where are a couple individuals of harm within the sale of this, but. I do, I do not know what they need. Practically off, off my head, that is. In the same supporters. And actually, all of that same person doing upgrades, I can't think of a single one, of course, I could be wrong. I just can't think of one off top of my head and. Okay, I'm, I'm, I got experience in company, but they're shaking, they went to, so.
Yeah, it's my confusion is that the egg isn't in other, and then, but then where is it, is it in undeveloped? Or is it not, and if it's a, or instead is that a resident or is it undeveloped, and what is? They're not there again.
So, yeah, see where it's at, so I could. Oh, like you're saying before, the beach lanes. But that. But, yeah, if it does, um.
I mean, I think if it was a farmstead, that, that would be a safe. Break a whole with the land, I mean, we have larger. I hope, sure. Versus. It smells maybe actual. Barnable land would be different, but a home. Or such, or something, or see, you know, like one, so we would be, if that's just for home. If you're.
Until tomorrow, some of them are some of the, a lot of money.
I'm, I'm talking, I'm talking tons of acres, but. You know.
What do you consider like a hobby park, would you?
Well, I don't want to penalize. I mean, that, that would be the. You know, that we don't have it in, but.
I think we can have that discussion in some, because we don't have a platform to actually classify it, and we need to have discussion on that.
Country acres, there was a, a, a resident who had three acres, I want to say it was. He subdivided it into two. Tried to, I think he tried to sell off two lots, didn't he? For two lots, yeah, and he sold one of them.
But how's that in relation to this conversation?
He would have been one, and then ultimately he turns into a half.
But I mean, was he in a regional district or was it a district?
Hypothetical, oh, no, not the split of the land. The split of the land.
Yeah.
Happened, but to a hypothetical problem.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Well, they did have, no, they didn't have a. They had the. Seventy six.
Oh, yeah, they would have been in the round.
So they got broken out.
It would have been.
It was broken into a split, yeah. So they did have a regional project that, I think back then. And if that split would have happened. Before that project was certified. That would have. Say, each, same amount, instead of lots that happened after, and a lot of us, but. So it's, we did have, it was actually the same.
Yeah, but again. They were. They didn't throw their hat in the ring on the, you know, somebody else threw it in and, right, um.
Yeah. But. It, it does have, you know, and you can't predict any, you know. Where it could happen. But you can project all, okay. When you have a large tract land. At some point. It is going to face. Some sort of development, it might be a, a year or two, it might be in twenty or thirty years, but. I, I think that's fair to say, at some point it's gonna be facing that. Is there a? So. Concept. Was fair. Be able to say it's fair. Numbers, is it, I mean, is there a number, I mean, I mean. That makes sense that you want. To have a gentleman. Play around with numbers. If you want to see like some, something one. Would say that, so there you go, like, okay. Try this number instead of, instead of two, which I called. The following categories. Here.
No, I think.
I, I just look at it.
Our topic here, I'm looking for you to present us with something. That falls in the middle, you know, the commercial of the eighteen to fifty, obviously, we want to see something in the middle. Same thing with the schools. And I don't know what that number is, I can't dictate that because I don't understand the formula, but. I think that's kind of what we're looking for.
And, and I just like, like, so I was just, I got a number. That you were looking at.
So basically, it's commercial and industrial, that's.
Didn't say that's true, do you?
Commercial, schools are the biggest ones.
So you're good group, commercial schools.
No, I'm not saying group them, I'm saying just come up with something that's a happy medium. And what, along with whatever anyone else has thoughts on.
And then the driver, maybe a few of it at one. At least.
You wanted to, do we want to start at one?
Or do you guys have any thoughts on that?
I mean, I don't. I mean, I don't.
Would it make sense to have like a scale so you tell your mission, depending on whether the assessment district's gonna change? Cause you can't, like you were saying, you can't put up, was it like you were saying, this lot's, you're not the same. They're not gonna use the same future. Yeah, for the driver, or it just gives more leeway in the future, so you're not pigeonholed on one number. Cause if you take that to another part of town. More discretion based on the project.
Is the driver kind of range? I like that concept.
I like that concept a lot, for the special assessment commission, which has the ability to say. Point five up to point one or or something along that lines, that they can determine what's fair.
What's the, what's the scale?
Or do you ever use about the top number?
Would I ever use?
Just, you don't have to answer it, I just.
That was made, though, that is the fair comment, it's just, it's the same. Trying to put every list in the same box, and so from that aspect, yes, whatever policy. We've come a long way, what I don't wanna see is the new policy, definitely policy, because we've come a long way, we've done a lot of positive things. But I don't want to see it totally wrecked what we've done, and I mean, the conversation's been very, um. Yeah, I don't know, I can't say that, that I don't.
I don't expect you to, I just was, if we give them the option to go like, fine, was the always just.
Well, I mean, I guess I'm kind of looking at this, so we. So the plan is, if this gets approved, and we're looking at special, we're looking at special assessment.
I'm gonna be talking to the pretty good, so.
I also, I guess we're spilling up. Um, but uh, is this gonna be in place for this cycle? Because, or can we use this opportunity to say, okay, we have this hypothetical, we have an idea.
It's gonna be.
Can we run it as it is and present the options to show like, here's what it does, and that might give. Everybody an idea before we say, oh, yeah, that's awesome, you gotta go. Do these specials this year, you know, just one thing after the other, when, I don't know. I don't know if everyone feels the same with us currently, but. I haven't digested yet, I don't know anything.
If we're able to separate out local and regional. If the council would say for local projects. Don't buy a load factory. Then. We're able to proceed without this policy really having, the street use factory doesn't have it. And that would be a local moving forward, this no load factory for that component. The load factory that we have is applicable to. Water sewer, these factory, those get that category. So that helps us. It gives some time to vet out the street use, but we're like. Get this ironed out. And just keep moving forward on that, get it ironed out. So we could be able to give us some more accurate. Estimate or projection, so like when we're asked. We're asked, what is estimate for the session, so.
We were told it was gonna be one.
Yeah, so that that's what, that is where we're coming from, that's side two is going, we wanna be able to. And the more, yeah, yeah, audition is the same, nothing is ever going to be absolutely perfect, but the more we get fall on. Some consistency, then what we have our policy. That helps us get more accurate estimates, so when we're able to be prepared upfront with people saying, here's where it falls, because right now. We'll have a struggle, what is the estimated specials on this lot or that one? Well, I think it's gonna fall within this range, however, can't promise you a lot. And and we feel like we're being transparent and speaking and upfront. But I can't drill down that number, and I, and that's the challenge. And we're going to add that anyways, when it comes like interest rates, things like that, I can't drill down that either. But it seems to be a lot of times when we get calls, folks understand the interest rate side of things, it's the, why can't you give me a? They better ask.
I I do also want to take a hard look at the three per acre versus four per acre. Argument, and the reason I say that is because all the new development going in that we've seen in the last two years. Has been surrounding the schools, and it's all four per acre.
You mean the multifamily.
You know, what is something of a lot size, like with the land use sergeant's knowledge, remember, if it was like. Was it just on your point or right around point?
Point, point two, or was it point?
From three, maybe?
But then it's the street as well, comes up as well. And that, that's something that I could look at, because we went three to one, but everything we've been putting in recently, especially in this area. It's borderline, so just, just take a look at it, I'm not asking you to do anything with it, just take a look at it, do a comparison, make sure that we're. We're dead on with what our thought process is there.
And that's something we've been, we're being all the discussing. For the each special assessment commission member, that was the topic of discussion was three or four. Where we're at on three, but it's gonna be consistent with labor assistance, with our comp plan, with. Within what we have, and then also looking at. Yes, lots are, aren't they, they're nice, but at the same time, recognizing, okay, with their exordance. Yeah, a lot of it's, so what is the smallest lot, real, real estate was the smallest lot. So we're like that, trying to factor in, okay, I'll add a grid, how much is given up for street right away? And that's where we're born, okay, can you argue, can it be argued that about three or about four?
Just take a look at it, let us know what you settled on and how you got there.
So the street use factoring, we're gonna work out when it comes time to assess sixty six, sixty four, you betcha. Actually eight, and we're really gonna have to look at it from wall, wall east and wall west. And and those two, those won't be this year, they'll be next year, sixty six will be. Probably next year, sixty fourth will be the year after that, because they're long projects, they're gonna take two years to build them. So, I think there's real world projects to bet these on. And when we did, when we worked up the Wall Avenue East, we went with equivalent units. Throughout the the use factory, and we added a one point five to those that were right along. Along Wall Avenue. Just, it's kind of a acknowledgement that they're getting a little more benefit than say somebody who lives south on uh. Mossway or one of those down there, and and that it wasn't. In my mind, just looking at it, a quick review of it, it kind of felt like it fell in mind a little bit with where. I envision like an arterial or collector assessment to be, so. We haven't looked at those for a while, and probably not gonna look at it until we get the current ones out. Get them done, and then I can, we can look at the pending ones, but. We have the opportunities here in the next couple of years to really. Get through this.
How does everyone feel about the no load factor for local?
Usually your local is gonna be, um, it's not a large major project, right?
Yeah, a new development could be, could be pretty significant. If you, if you look at Southdale Farms fourth. If you look at Southdale Farms fourth.
It's a lot more than just a residential development.
It is, it is, but sixty fifth avenue was constructed as part of this project. This parcel has this front footage, this, this parcel has this front footage, this parcel has this front footage. So the load factoring is kind of accounting for itself, because guys of the parcel. You know, this guy gets, or this lot gets this forty two feet or whatever it is, this one gets. Significant of all, more just because of the size of the parcel currently.
Did you do the front footage?
Now, if you get into the each.
Higher too.
Then it's like, oh boy, cause then these are really big, and this is the one, this is one, and this becomes. Virtual or the compact development, whatever, so. Yeah, this one here, if that's perfect, this one we were gonna. I don't think we did it, but we could average the front and back, because we've done that, all the sack lots. Average the front and the back and get a more uniform, because these guys have not much frontage, but pretty good sense, really, you know. So I wouldn't say. I would make that discussion every one. I'm saying yes or no, but maybe discussion, which I hate to say it.
The low pack.
Well, the only way it'd be applicable would be by the each, because if you were to take the front footage and multiply by a use factor.
Typically.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, it's. But if you have a dynamic like that, you're, you're likely not going to do it each anyways.
Probably not.
Very rarely can we even do it each.
Very rarely, unless it's when it comes on both, it's like this. Typically, it's equivalent unit, and the old way of calculating equivalent units was the area minus one. To round it to a whole number, drop down to a whole.
I I think it is inconsistent, that's a no, no factor, it does give us.
Well, I, I agree, and I don't foresee proposing anything that would be equivalent. Or in each, I should say, other than the water and sewer, and it's pretty hard to say, your sewer line. Is one point four times.
But they, the, but local, they would have the bill, the assessing commission has the ability to.
So, Monday night, are you gonna talk about about the local and the whatever? I I don't know what you can. No, I mean, I don't even have that many actions tonight, but.
No, it'd be. If we're able to work up some other scenarios or concepts, we'll touch base. We will not have creation impact of probably before. If we can, we will, but I can't promise, just because I don't know how to. I I just wanna make sure everybody knows, I may not be able to have.
I mean, I feel like we've got pretty drastic things here tonight, so that, I mean, I would be fine with that, if you guys are okay with that.
But like you're saying, the big thing is. Being this up over and over is the local, it's regional, if we're able to break out local, that helps us keep the ball looking. And I can be going to Martin and Brad now and go, hey, starting. And that helps us go from there, so I'm, I'm just asking, council really about that. Uh, kind of your priority, you've been thinking through with staff, and then you can move into your setting, factoring. That helps us, but it isn't. Make the break for certain patients, so the issues you can have. But that does, and. I mean, one of the big drivers for us, the south side is feeling to be able to be factor. So, if we're able to iron out the students factory next week, awesome, if this can take us a month or two, okay. Where are we doing, but. I just, the, the big thing, the big thing for us at staff, also to that.
What helps us when we're focused on the projects, too, that does, people want to be given. Accurate information so they can voice their opinion and or protest and not just be like this is. Having someone come in and say this is unrealistic, have two hundred and some thousand.
I can say, part of what he was talking about, it's like when something changes, so comes from commercial and church. It's kind of like squeezing a ball, so the numbers go elsewhere from that, money for the project goes elsewhere. So you could be pushing it in a residential, or prior, you didn't expect that, because you were assuming it was just getting commercial all along. So it's just a church, and they have an assessment, I do it.
I know you have said that it's varied, but is this closer to the system that's used by. Uh, nearby cities or similar sizes, if it's growing.
So an extensive analysis done by Stan Tech when those policies being started. And I, I don't remember, I mean, I've got a folder of like, Boston, Ferguson Falls, not Ferguson Falls, Boston Fargo, West. Grand Ford, a good policy, mine out, I think, Bismarck is one, so I kind of, I kind of relooked through them. And it's, it's, you know, you look at the far one, the regional, and they they contribute a lot to those. So that the assessment is, is less everywhere, and of course, isn't contributing as much to those, so I think the policy was only seven thirty. Yeah, where.
We're putting it there, but we're not there yet.
So from the, from the local side, it's pretty uniform, it's where you get into the regional, that things. Like I said, West Fargo, we looked at that, it was an equivalent unit, basically one per acre, dropping it. With one acre forgiven for having residents on it, and then leaving it at the, making it, dropping it down to a whole one. So if you had like twenty one point nine acres, you got assessed for. Twenty or nineteen point, twenty point nine, probably down to twenty. So it's like one point nine that you get credit for, which isn't the whole lot when it comes to that twenty acres or something like that. Believe me, nobody would like to have a spreadsheet board that you just go, total project cost, enter, then plus two, and just have it go. Here it is, nobody argues it. Programmer Jeff, can't wait to happen.
Artificial intelligence.
No, 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 we have.
That's better ratio than maps, where I'll show exactly the methodology and pass it again, go back and forth.
I definitely, I definitely appreciate the conversation, I think we made some progress, I will reserve my comments on collector, but we'll do it.
I've, uh.
Yeah, no, it's okay.
I will leave a link for the next meeting, I will be traveling for work, but I will be calling you. At Monday's meeting, I appreciate this, apologies for the tardiness. And anyway, we gotta close it up. So, are we ready to close it up, Brandon? Folks, anybody else have anything left to talk about for the special assessment policy? Okay, I'll make a promotion adjourned.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I'll make a second, phone favor. Any questions about, any issues with either of those?